Administrative staff, mayor, deputy clerk, our city treasurer, and again to our administrative staff in the listening audience. Today is Monday, January the 11th, 2021, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight three two two six eight three six six nine eight. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act 254 of 2020, Senate Bill 1246, and the Remote Participation in Public Meetings Policy adopted by City Council on December 28th, 2020, Resolution Number 2355, which permits the remote attendance by members of a public body using telephonic or video conferencing means in certain circumstances, and to allow the public business of the Romulus City Council to conduct in a manner that permits both the general public and members of the public bodies to participate by electronic means under circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join the meeting by phone, call six four six five five eight eight six five six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of this meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the agenda. And at this time, we will have Mr. Chair, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, roll call was taken at our study session, which was at six o'clock. And we had a quorum for that meeting, and we also have a quorum for this regular council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda, number two, minutes, number three, petitioner, number four, chairperson's report, five, mayor's report, six, clerk's report, seven, treasurer's report, eight, public comment, nine, unfinished business, ten, new business. Number 11 is warrant 21-1, number 12 is communication, and number 13, adjournment. An emotion been ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the council agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
She have votes yes, agenda is approved.
Number two are the minutes, agenda item 2A, for approval. Are the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 4th, 2021 at 7:30 PM?
So move for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 4th, 2021.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our regular meeting held on January 4th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
She have votes yes, the motion is approved.
Agenda item 2B, for approval. Are the minutes from the special meeting held on January 4th, 2021 at 6:00 PM to discuss the mid-year court presentation?
So move for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on January 4th, 2021 to discuss the mid-year court presentation.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on January 4th, 2021 at 6:00 PM to discuss the mid-year court presentation. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
She have votes yes, motion approved.
For three is petitioner, Mr. Chair and Counsel. We do have a petitioner tonight on the agenda. We have Reverend Arthur Willis, and he's here to discuss the Martin Luther King Day Celebration. And Reverend Willis, if you are, if you have joined the meeting, I just need to know what phone number, or have you called in? I don't know if Ms., I don't see that he has joined the meeting. Reverend Arthur Willis, have you joined the meeting? I don't see where he's joined, Mr. Chair and Counsel. However, I can speak to this if I can, if I may, if it's, if you will allow. Reverend Willis, tonight, he wanted to appear before you to discuss the 2021, or this year's MLK Day Celebration. He is requesting approval for the event, and then approval for road closure for a march. And this year, because of COVID and with everything going on, it's a scaled-down program. The march itself would begin at the Community Baptist Church on Fourth Street, and then from there would march up Fourth to Beverly, Beverly to Washington, and then to Vine Wood, and end at the Community Baptist Church. Afterwards, following, then there would be a very small program, which will be available on Zoom and Facebook Live. Counsel, we did email the flyers to you all today, and a lot of things were just kind of finalized over the weekend. So that is the purpose of him submitting this petition for this evening. Of course, he would need some support from, you know, police and fire and public works. It does not, the walk will not involve any county roads. Basically, the walk, he really kind, it's really a car caravan. Those that would like to walk can walk, but the idea is just to have a car caravan to keep people safe. They end in the parking lot, and they can park, and then listen in on the program, which will be held inside of the church. But of course, very few individuals that would be facilitating the actual service. So it's still, you know, this is a very well-attended event here in Romulus, something that we look forward to every year. And, you know, under the circumstances, everything has to be scaled down, you know, for the safety of everyone, and then to comply with the, with the guidelines, CDC guidelines and governor's orders and things. So that's what this petition is about. So if, if you please, I mean, you know, to approve the event itself, that's, that's what he's seeking here in this, in his petition.
Just one quick correction.
Ms. Webb had a comment.
Okay, then I have a quick correction about what Ms. Ellen was saying.
Oh, well, that's okay. I prefer you to go with the correction first, and then I'll make the motion.
It's going to end at Pentecost Baptist Church. I think you said Community Baptist Church. It will end at Reverend Willis Church, at Pentecost Baptist Church on Vine Wood.
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. And now, through the chair, I make the motion for the request presented by our clerk, Reverend Arthur Willis, regarding the MLK Day Celebration.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, for the celebration of Reverend Willis. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
She have votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you. I'm sure that Reverend Willis will be very appreciative of your continued support. That takes us to number four, which is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight at 6:00 PM, we had a, a study session discussing the financial audit presentation. And I'd just like to say that the Romulus City is doing a great job of trying to stay above financially and with this COVID-19 pandemic. I'd just like to say that, hey, let's just stay safe and work together. That concludes the chairperson's report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
I support that.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
She have votes yes, motion approved, and thank you.
That takes us to number five, the mayor's report.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, our clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, and viewing audience. The quote I brought tonight is from a former president. I thought it really tied to the times that we're in, and it goes as this. Peace is not the absence of conflict. It is the ability to handle conflict by peaceful means. And I thought that that very much what is, what needs to be said and needs to be considered during these times. Mr. Chairman, a couple, a couple of comments I just do want to make. We wanted to wish Mrs. Wadsworth a happy birthday tonight. I also wanted to extend a birthday wish to you this Wednesday the 13th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very happy birthday. Also, I'd like to request from City Council, and I've already done a proclamation, but it'd be very fitting, this Wednesday the 13th, Mr. Barden, you share a birthday with Sheldon Chandler, who is turning 90 years old. And Sheldon, who we, who we all know and love, is a great individual, comes from a great family. He's a hometown hero, if you recall. He was a prior Chamber Person of the Year. He's been still involved in the Historical Commission and Society. He still serves on our ZBA actively, many other committees over the years that he has served in different capacities. I'll tell you a story. I was driving by this last summer, in like July, it's hot, sweaty. I look at the back of the cemetery, here's somebody working, cleaning something up and putting in the dumpster. So I pulled around the U Drive and drive back there, and here's Sheldon in a t-shirt, buzzing up some broken limbs, fixing it up, cleaning it up. Nobody asked him to do that. He loves his community. He served his country in the Navy. I mean, I can't say enough good things about him, and, and I know he, he looks better and probably healthier than I am, and he's 90 years old, Mr. Barden. So what I'd ask, please, respectively, of Counsel, is to do a resolutions that I could have all the electeds sign and get to him as well, in addition to the proclamation that we've done here in my office.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
I support that.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe.
That we approve a resolution for Sheldon Chandler commemorating his 90th birthday and his serving.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, y'all jumped the gun. I, it's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for resolution for Mr. Sheldon. And then I want to comment.
Oh, boy.
First of all, thank you, Mayor, for sharing a resolution for a person, Sheldon, 90 years old. I hope that, God prays, that I can make it to 90. It's, it's, it's a thing, like, my birthday is coming up, the 13th. And to live 90 years old and have the city of Romulus collaborate on a person that's so been so involved in the city, I think it's an honor. I have no more, any other comments from City Council? If not, roll call vote.
I would just like to say, when I first moved here and was volunteering at Barth Elementary, Mr. and Mrs. Chandler were one of the first couples that took me in under their wing, and has thus far, all these years, they were great, he and Gloria. They're always, they're always great people and very community. I mean, just so involved in the community, and that's probably one of the reasons between them and Carol Bells, that I really got involved when I first moved here, to volunteer with the schools and, you know, the different committees. So I wish him a wonderful, wonderful 90th birthday.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Mr. Chair, my internet cut out. Did I, what did I miss?
Okay, that's okay, Ms. Abdo, everything is handled.
Okay, I'm sorry, my internet cuts out a lot.
No problem. If there's no other comments, it's roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
She have votes yes, motion approved. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel, for doing it. I know that Sheldon will appreciate it, and he's just a real class act, and he'll appreciate that. I do have one action item, City Council, tonight before you. This is a recommendation from Gary Harris, our purchasing director, and Maria Ferris, our finance director, along with legal counsel. And the request is before you is to concur with administration and grant authorization to the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease slash purchase agreement with Comerica Leasing. That's for the lease purchase of a 2021 Freightliner 108 SD Dump Chassis. The amount is eighty-seven thousand, six twenty-two and zero cents, at a fixed interest rate of 2.18% for five years. First payment to be made on about January 15th of 2022. The city would own that vehicle at the term of the lease.
Okay, through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to concur with administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease purchase agreement with Comerica Leasing for the lease purchase of a 2021 Freightliner 108 SD Dump Chassis in an amount of eighty-seven thousand, six twenty-two, at a fixed interest rate of 2.18% for five years, with the first payment to be made on or on or about January 15th, 2022. The city would own the vehicle at the end of the lease.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb. And this was for the, the five-year lease agreement with the Comerica Leasing. Any comments? Hear no comments, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
She have votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Counsel. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Number six is the clerk's report. I have one action item, but before I ask you to take action on that item, first I'd like to thank the Deputy Clerk, Deshaun Hockenhall, for filling in for me last week. I was under the weather, and did listen in. He did a great job, so thank you, Deputy Clerk Hockenhall. Next, I'd like to echo what Mayor Burcroft was saying about Sheldon Chandler. He also serves on the Cemetery Board as well, and, and wish Sheldon a happy 90th birthday. And then, happy birthday, Councilman Barton, as well. Happy birthday to you as well. And then, one last thing with regards to the Martin Luther King Program. I apologize, I didn't mention was that, you know, every year, it's, this is a collaborative effort, where, I guess we've been doing this about 20 years or so, but it usually involves the city, the schools, and the ministerial alliance. And again, with COVID and so much going on, I just want to applaud the Ministerial Alliance for kind of keeping that torch going. And this year, they basically said, okay, we'll sponsor it, we'll host it, the, the event for this year. So thank you to the Ministerial Alliance for keeping the, keeping the tradition going. Just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. And let's see, and that's all I have. And so, to my action item, we have one. It's for introduction and first reading of the Recreation Master Plan. Let's see, it's a recommended for approval, the five-year Romulus Recreational Master Plan. And we're just, you have to request this for an approval. Ms. Colfield is on the line, in case Counsel may have questions before you take action. In your packet, you should have received a really nice presentation of that, of that master plan. So again, if you have questions before taking action, Ms. Colfield is available online. And I believe she would like to, I think she has a presentation for you before taking action. So you should, a PowerPoint should have just popped up on your screen. Tanya, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for allowing me this time just to speak with you just for a little bit on our 2021 through 2025 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. If you look at the first screen, why the Recreation Master Plan is beneficial to the City of Romulus? This is a five-year plan. It's required to be eligible and qualify and apply for recreation grants administered by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. This plan assists the MDNR in evaluating grant applications and determining how the proposed projects fit within the recreation priorities. The history and plan key updates. The Past Park and Recreation Master Plan was adopted by the City Council in January 2015. This was a lengthy process and was approved in the fall of 2015. The master plan was effective through December 2019. The planning began in 2019 to update the five-year plan. World-changing events caused delays, but we are happy to resubmit an updated plan to access grant funding with the City Council's approval. Our Recreation Master Plan focuses on the city vision plan and that we provide quality recreation programs and events. We are privileged to have a new grant administrator to help with research and seek out new grant funding opportunities. The key points of the plan. We are thankful to have our Recreation Commission committed to serving our community. If you refer to Section 2 on Page 3, our community, as this tells the story of Romulus and who we serve. Our funding sources starts on Page 13, and it include park updates that are possible. We are truly thankful. Our volunteers on Page 14, we are extremely proud of your dedication to serve our residents. Our recreation opportunities, refer to Page 15, moving forward, and they are updating our parks for you. Our program, Page 25, providing quality programs and events to serve our community. Our planning and public input portion is on Page 27. We hear what you have to say and try to do our best to accommodate you. And lastly, our goals and objectives on Page 31. We want your experiences to be the ones you remember and want to come back to. With that, our benefits and learning, what I've learned through working on this master plan is the increased funding opportunities for our City of Romulus, for our Parks and Recreation Department. As the city grows, recreation needs to grow as well, making sure that our families are able to access walking, running, and biking paths, recreation programs, and special events such as movies in the park, music in the park, and festivals. Continue to bring together our community in unity. Making sure that every person, all ages and abilities, are included in recreation. Working along with the DDA Department and TIFA jointly to provide an opportunity for all walks of life. The opening of two dog parks that met the need of our residents. Recognizing the recreation offers so many avenues for our children with new planning for our children in the light of current situation. And hoping to continue to work with our schools and programming for our children. And lastly, just our summary, just thank you for your time, and we hope that you would approve this first reading.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Abdo?
I'd like to make a motion for approval and first reading for the, excuse me, Recreation Master Plan.
Support. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for introduction or first reading of the Recreation Master Plan. Any discussion?
Through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I just want to say, and I talked with Tanya earlier, I love this report. I love this plan. Whoever did this, the committee, the Recreation, Tanya, whatever the collaborative effort was put into this, y'all did an amazing job. I love this report. The data, the examples, the history, I mean, it was so, I was telling Tanya earlier, I was reading it, and I didn't finish the last few pages, because I had to go to work, but I was ready to miss work, because I want to finish reading this report. It was really, really good, so kudos and hats off to all the work you, the Recreation Committee, Tanya, everybody put into this report. Very good job. Now, my one question I do have regarding this is that with everything that's involved in this master plan, how is all this going to get executed with one FTE? That's my question. I just want to know, because this is a lot of stuff going on here. And one FTE, I don't know if it's going to be able to handle all that's going on in this report. So I just, just have, that's my question.
I would just try to work my hardest to, to move forward with everything that we're approved on, and just do the best that I can.
We're going to have some support to that, that department from the administration to help her with this?
You've got it.
Okay.
Whole team's behind her, and Tanya's doing a great job. Thank you, Tanya, for all you do.
Yeah, that's a lot going on. Thank you, Tanya. That's a great report.
Up through the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Naturally, I like to thank Tanya, who has done a wonderful, wonderful job with the Recreation Department. And I'd like to thank her committee, Diane Poet, William Wadsworth, Kathy Abdul, and Arnette Grissom, Ruby Paisley, Sandy Tenney, and the administration, the Finance Department, building, everyone who helped. And I must say, Tanya, with a short amount of time that you all had to put a five-year master plan together, I take my hat off to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Yes, John.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Other comment, Ms. Williams?
Yes. I would also like to thank the Recreation Department, all the commissioners that also helped in this. that are also helped in this, uh, in this plan. I would just like to advise, uh, Ms. Colfield. I, I would really appreciate it, and I'm sure it would make a difference if even as you're working on bringing all of these things to the forehead. Could you make sure with this, before this plan end, that the next five-year plan is already in motion? Because this plan ended in two thousand and nineteen. So, uh, here again, we're voting on a plan that had already expired. So, I mean, I support you. I think, thank you so much. And the, the recreation department and what they did down at that Top Park on Beverly Road worked really hard. And Jasmine, I can't forget Jasmine. Jasmine was there and worked on it. But, uh, that would really, uh, make a difference, uh, with me if, uh, the plan for the next five-year, uh, five years is done before it expires. Thank you.
Any other comments from, uh, council? If there's no other comments from council, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, that concludes the clerk's report. Um, takes us to number seven, the treasurer's report.
Good evening, council, mayor, clerk, deputy clerk and audience. I too like to wish Mr. Barton and Mr. Sheldon Chandler a very happy birthday. Also, um, you're welcome. Also, I would like to, um, compliment Tanya on her presentation nicely done. I know she put a lot of work into that and you did a great job, and I really appreciate your presentation. And I also would like to thank the work of the recreation commission. This is a great program. I know how much, um, you love the kids, especially Tanya. I know your heart's in it, and I love to see that. So great job to all of you. And I look forward to the wonderful things that you guys will do. And that is it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, treasurer Stacy.
You're welcome.
All right, that takes us to number eight. Public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself when acknowledged and to mute yourself when finished. If dialing in from a touch mute when acknowledged, and again, star six to mute yourself when finished. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. Uh, we will ask you to state your name just for the record. Um, and again, as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment. What we want to do to help those, just to remind you, um, when you're down to, uh, one minute remaining and your time will hold up a, a card, just to let you know you have one minute remaining, um, for, um, you know, for the duration of the time that you're speaking. So, Mr. Chair, we do have Reverend Arthur Willis who have, uh, who have joined us. And, uh, at this time, if we can have, uh, Reverend Willis, uh, speak, uh, during public this portion of the meeting. Reverend Willis?
Ms. Willis, Mr. Willis, go ahead. Mr. Willis?
I think we need you done, there he is, okay.
Councilman Barton, thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much for taking my call. Thank you, uh, to all of you. Happy New Year to all of you. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, God bless you. Thank you so much for having me and clerk and, and the treasurer and all of you council people. We certainly thank all of you. This has been a tough year for all of us and haven't seen me around, haven't seen you. I miss you guys. But we certainly been praying for you guys as you guys go through. Ellen, I want to thank you so much for doing a great job explaining that, that program to us. I do want to apologize for not being there tonight, but there's always when, and I, and all of you know, you all is important. You all have other jobs to do. When you have those jobs, do something that always comes up when you're doing something. But I do think I was able to get in on time tonight, just to listen to Ellen give the great report, as she did. Give a great report. So thank you so much. Just want to just, just piggyback on what she's already said is that we did not want, Ellen and I talked a lot, we did not want to counsel this year's, uh, MLK Martin Luther King celebration because we, Romulus, I think, also have had some of the best in the state, and we still have some of the best in the state. So this year, we'll do something a little bit different, uh, and, and we're hoping and praying that people still come out, even though we not, we won't be all into a building that we normally would be, but there will be, uh, space inside the church if you want to come in. Probably safe distance, you have to wear your mask, and also we have sanitizer there if you want to come in. Uh, otherwise, you stay outside in your car after procession. We will start the procession, uh, at about nine o'clock, hour late this year. Uh, start at nine o'clock because we're not having breakfast. So we start at nine o'clock this year, uh, with the procession from, uh, Community Baptist Church on Fourth Street, down Fourth Street to Beverly, to Beverly, to, uh, uh, to Washington, to Vine Wood, right to our church. And in the parking lot, you can stay in your car and, um, turn your radio on to ninety-five point one, and you'll be able to hear, uh, the service. You know, if you have your phone, you turn your phone to, uh, Zoom or Facebook. You'll be able to see the presentation, the program that's going on inside the church. Uh, you also hopefully be able to see the ones that call in, uh, and we've asked those, uh, uh, part of our, we're not using a guest speaker this year because we have so many people in our city that, uh, that often have, have, um, become such, in a certain great position because, I should say, of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. So we asking along with some of the clergy from the ministerial alliance to speak, and we all giving them like one, two minutes to speak. We're asking also, we want our clerk, I know that she may not be in town this year, but if wherever she's at, when I clerk, just to, just to talk about being, being an African-American, uh, clerk and how Martin Luther King paved the way for her to do what she do. And we have others going to be saying some of the same thing in that area. So this year is going to be unique, but I think it's going to be very nice. Uh, you don't want to miss it. Uh, it'd be a little bit different than the others, but I think it's going to be great. So we do want to have our mayor, uh, uh, open us up with, with, uh, with, with, uh, comments about the city, what's going on. So we're playing the same format, the same thing, uh, but without a guest speaking, without breakfast. But we're looking to have the march, and I'm okay, if it's okay with the mayor and the police department, certainly would love to have the police too. I talked with, uh, Josh earlier during the day, he's, uh, about having the police there. I'm also going to contact St. John Lodge by them being there to help us out with some of the smallest streets that come out into the, uh, intersection. So we're looking to have a great celebration. Um, uh, we're looking to have all of you there. If you can't make it, go on Zoom and you have a link there for the Zoom or Facebook, and you'll be able to see the presentation. Or you'd like to be a part of that drive, we're not going to do too much walking this year. We're going to all have a possession in our cars. And though they want to walk, you can walk, speed walk, and then we'll be able to just have a great celebration. It's a, it's a good time of year to celebrate. We've been through so much in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, just a great time to have to celebrate something. And what better to celebrate than Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday and lieu of what's going on in our country, uh, all during this twenty twenty period. So thank you for taking my time. Do again, apologize for my tardiness, uh, trying to get on tonight, but I was working on another project and just couldn't get there. But again, thank you, uh, Ellen, for taking care of things for me as always. Excellent job for you. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say something, uh, Madam Clerk. As, uh, Chairman, I'd like to say, I'd like to thank, uh, Reverend Willis and, and you, uh, Ms. Braggs, and the staff that puts on this every year. I think you guys do a great job. And, uh, with this pandemic, you know, it's just something that keeps going on that we appreciate. Uh, Ms. Braggs, as your clerk, Reverend Willis, all you guys, we re- I just want you guys to know that we really, really appreciate what you're doing. I think all the community in Romulus appreciate what you're doing. I want to make that clear because everywhere I go, they appreciate you. I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak during this portion of the meeting? Mr. Chair, no one has indicated that they would like to speak during public comment.
Uh, Madam Clerk, we'll close that part out.
All right, that takes us to number nine, unfinished business. Number ten, new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty-one dash one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We pay warrant twenty-one dash one in the following amounts. General fund, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Major street fund, twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Local street fund, nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Public safety fund, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Capital TV, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, cable TV, I'm sorry. Uh, garbage and rubbish collection fund, four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Nine-one-one service fund, twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and two cents. Law enforcement, one hundred and sixty dollars. Library fund, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents. DDA, two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent. Tifa District Two, eighteen thousand, sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. CIP bonds for the court building, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Vining Road Extension E-course Construction, two hundred dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, seventy-four thousand, forty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Motor vehicle, nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Technology Services, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Retiree insurance benefits, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Revolving Fund, one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Current tax, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Payroll Fund, five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. All funds totaling eight hundred, nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
For.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally to pay warrant number twenty-one dash one for eight hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number twelve is communication.
Through the chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Uh, Tally.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First, happy birthday, happy pre-birthday for Wednesday. Just want to give you that shout out. And then to Mr. Chandler, Mr. Sheldon, just a great guy. I just want to give a shout out to him. Happy birthday for his birthday on Wednesday as well. Um, and then we did have the study session at six. As I said last week, I just want to thank the mayor and his team and everybody for the measures being taken to position us for greatness in our city in COVID nineteen and otherwise. Just thanks for all the hard work. Just positioning, making us solid during this time during, through a pandemic. Um, there's still cities out there still trying to figure this thing out, you know, but we are in a city that's positioned us, that's making, um, taking measures just to get us in, um, keep us solid. So I just want to thank the mayor, his team, um, council, everybody working together, Mr. Barton always said, working together as a team to keep our city going forward, moving forward. And I think that's the theme of Martin Luther King this year. Is that right, Ms., uh, Ellen? The theme for Martin Luther King?
Yes, keep moving forward.
Keep moving forward, and that is it. We got to keep moving forward, no looking back, moving forward and moving ahead. So I want to thank the mayor, his team, the council, everybody working together, moving the city forward. And, um, and then lastly, I just want to, again, I talked about the parent surveys. We still, uh, looking for surveys for, um, parents, for our kids, for our virtual learning centers. We want to get instituted in some of our churches. Um, the, um, city has agreed to post the survey on their website. Or, and then the ministerial alliance has, uh, on their Facebook page, which should be posted. So please pray the word. We want parents to fill out some surveys so we can see what we can do to pull together these virtual learning centers for our kids during this pandemic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Tally.
Is there any other? I'm sorry, Mr. Barton.
Oh, go ahead. Uh, somebody else? If nobody else, I want to comment. You have something to say, uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes, but the clerk was getting ready to say something, was you clerk?
No, I was just trying to see if anybody else had anything to say. I'm sorry.
I, I would just like to make sure that we acknowledge the, the police, the, uh, Capitol, uh, the police officers that lost this life at the Capitol other, uh, last week. It's, it's a sad situation. Um, you know, we, we do a lot of talking. But, you know, even, uh, with the Martin Luther King program of moving forward, you cannot move forward if you don't have a plan to do something about moving forward. Martin Luther King had a plan, and that's how they made it. And what we have to do, because the footprints are disappearing. And what we do, the generations behind us are watching us. So we have to be very careful about talking and not putting actions behind the words that we speak from our mouth. And I just, you know, my heart goes out to all those that lost their lives, that the, uh, state, the federal, uh, Congress folks and all those that was in there that, that saw their lives flash in front of their face. We have to make sure because United States is in a bad way right now. They're in a really bad way. There's so many people living on the edge and they're angry. So we have to make sure that we pray at all times, and we have to make sure not only on the federal level, on the state level, on the county level, at the city level, that we make sure that we're doing everything that we should be doing to make things better moving forward, because it's like we're on TV and we're being watched. So we can say a lot of things with our words, but we have to show more action. And on top of that, I would like to say again, Forgotten Harvest has been a total blessing for our city. Last week, we gave over twenty-five hundred masks to the residents that came through the line. And, uh, we have more masks to give out. So, and you know, the good thing about it, we made sure that those masks went directly to the residents. And so, uh, and, and they was shocked and amazed and, and overly happy on top of the, the food that we give every week. They, they additionally got masks. So again, we will be at the high school tomorrow from twelve to three. All you need is your name and address. Make sure that your trunk is empty so, uh, your trunk can be loaded with the food and, um, you know, your benefit. I, uh, thank the new superintendent and the school board for allowing us to use that parking lot, because if it wasn't for them, uh, you know, we wouldn't be able to service the community as we have. Um, I want to thank, uh, the, the mayor and the mayor's chief of staff for allowing that, uh, information to go up on the city website to encourage people. We're still there, and until, uh, further notice, we'll be there every Tuesday. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Uh.
First of all, anybody else?
Don't think so.
Okay, I get a chance to get in there, right? Okay. Again, I like to say, uh, as Ms. Tally said, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and his, uh, administration for the work they do. I, uh, talked with a lot of different cities. And they, uh, asked me, how is our Romulus doing? Doing, uh, the, about the circumstances, Romulus is doing pretty good as far as we can. You see what I'm saying? We do this, we, we try to, uh, do this thing in this COVID twenty-one, nineteen, I'm sorry. Uh, you know, Romulus, I love Romulus. A lot of cities, I see this really having a lot of problems that they trying to correct, Ms. Tally.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I just love Romulus because I think the mayor and administration and the council people are doing the best they can. I think all y'all should be amended for the work you do. You see? And I'm just so glad that I'm a part of this administration, this city council, and the residents of Romulus. I don't want to preach, uh, Reverend Willis. I just want to say I love you guys and Romulus. And my birthday is coming up. And I just want to say best wishes to Sheldon. Thank you all for my best wishes. Thank you. I'm not going to tell my age because I'm only twenty-nine. But, you know, you know, that's a lie. But anyway, thank you and I love you. God bless.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, that takes us to number thirteen, adjournment, and the time is eight twenty-one.
Call moved for adjournment.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb for adjournment. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes, you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you and love you all.